I guess we're ready, huh? You ready?
Yeah, as ready as I ever am.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is one of our bi-weekly extraordinary sessions of the Board of Selectmen.
I almost said something to you, didn't you?
Typically, we take up topics that are COVID-related and others that are time-sensitive or pressing. So usually, we start with just some fill-in information about COVID. And today, maybe we'll start with the Board of Health.
As far as Halifax, we haven't had any new suspected or confirmed cases. So we're in a virtual chip on that. Still communication with the foreshowers, but kind of in a further progress to be in place. It's hoping today we don't need our number. So I would be COVID, I think. Last night at Board of Health meeting, they asked if we consider putting on our message board at the fire station. Triple E updates available at nastro.gov. They love the request from the board.
Yeah, the triple E has been as close as Middleborough and Plington.
Absolutely.
And Plinton now?
And Plinton now, yeah.
And then this down today from CDC is 2020 is an expected outbreak of life-threatening acute flaccid myelitis. Oops, what is that? Acute flaccid myelitis. It's basically because of mosquito outbreak. None of children are very susceptible to getting this, to paralyzing, irreversiblely paralyzing, life-threatening disease. That breaks out every couple of years. This was joining the group of people we have on page.
When you say young children, what kind of age group are we talking about?
The same age. I folded it for Charles, I'll forward it to you guys too. Don't see exactly.
I'm just curious if they were really young children or young adults or...
It looks at probably secondary damage.
Not that that's good, I'm just curious where.
Are there... Is that outbreak in New England right now?
No, not in New England.
Wow, just keep getting more things to worry about.
Flying monkeys.
I guess a long time for this hogging to New York and...
What's the effect?
Paralysis. Pretty early for setting down the lungs and your limbs. It appears to be irreversible. One of the CDC conference calls with the doctors, and the doctors didn't have any cure or any hope for it, who's much in the same old book, there's still raising the triple E and COVID.
Where's ground zero with this disease? Where did it start? Do you have any ideas?
I don't have that answer.
Pretty much it?
Those, now those are my updates for today. Now there's a thing with the county saying increase in cases, being a county? No, it's actually still got no, the same hot towns. You're brought from this far over to the side, you know, road areas, you know, and depending on testing too. But I'm really curious to find out this. Next Saturday, Randolph is going to do a open-to-the-public test for free charge. And I was talking to the health director again, and he goes, I'm really curious to see, you know, where the cases are coming from, because of nothing, just this time. He's really curious about this time.
Moving on, Chief Veras.
UV lighting system came in, work the police chief, we'll take care of the police cars and the ambulances. Anyone else that wants to use it can certainly use it, but it does have an eight-by-eight area at a time. So it's five minutes for each eight-by-eight area. So if we have a large room, we have to run, go in after five minutes and exchange the location of the light. Notified by NIMA that we are probably next week, an order came in for us, which a previously we know about, and it's not included in any of our other grants or orders. Sixty-two-hundred-and-ninety-five masks, sixty-two-hundred surgical masks, hundred-and-twenty-five, sorry, six-hundred-and-twenty-five face shields, and eighty pairs of gloves. So if there's any department that is, any PP, I'd say is including the schools, we should honor a hump, because we have, plus, we have $11,000 assistance firefighter grant, one of our PP that still hasn't come in, and that's everything, tiger suits, gloves, masks, so we're pretty rough set.
Chief Shaws? Huh? No news is good news.
What update from school?
Yeah, what's going next? What's going on?
So last night, Silver Lake voted after the survey results. Survey results show forty-eight percent of the people went back to school at three feet. So taking into consideration the actual transportation issue of being down to one-third of the students, the only way possible to do that would be to spend probably another $480,000 to run the buses. That would just be for Silver Lake to do all three elementary schools. It'd be another $480,000 for ninety days.
For how many?
For ninety days.
So we...
For half the year.
Okay.
The bus company's willing to work with us on the Wednesdays, that we're not going to have runs on Wednesdays right now because of the schedule.
What kind of schedule?
So right now, the hybrid schedule is A-B. So half the students that would go on Monday, Tuesday, there would be some kids that are high-needs kids, would still be going to school Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. The other half, so the A-B group would go to school, the B group would be remote learning on Monday, Tuesday, swap Thursday, Friday. The A group would stay home and have remote learning, the B group would be in the classroom. The issue with that, just so everyone's aware, is the teaching staff that stays remote would stay remote. So the kids that would be taught Monday, Tuesday remote would have the same teacher remotely. The teachers would stay the same. So if they taught in the school, the teaching in the school for the same week. So they will be exposed to the same number of kids, no matter what.
Is that the one you sent to the state?
So the one that we sent to the state last night is the hybrid from Silver Lake. Up for discussion tonight's meeting. We're going to have a joint meeting with Kingston and Halifax Elementary School. Aunt Plinton is on the agenda. Silver Lake's on the agenda, but we voted last night that we would not be attending.
Is this a union committee meeting?
It's not Union Thirty-One, because they said that we could hold off on that because that's more of a budget discussion until after we have budget numbers. So Halifax and Kingston both voted to lean towards full week back to school. I don't know whether or not, whether or not we can get the kids to school is a different question, and whether or not, you know, input from Bob and the Kingston Board of Health, whether or not they'll okay the three-foot distance.
And this is all assuming there isn't an outbreak or surge?
So, yeah, so it's all assuming that things continue the way it is right now. If the governor says, we move back a step, schools aren't opening, we've got to go full remote.
But then you've already contracted for buses, we still...
So the bus contract was pre-COVID. It was signed up pre-COVID. So we still have to pay for the hundred-and-eighty days, and we're already at...
Whether we're sending it or not?
Yep.
Can we get two trips a day? That's a four trip.
Well, so we're at one-third capacity. So realistically, you would need to give everyone busing with the number of students we have, you'd have to make three trips, because you're at a third capacity. Whether or not we could get the teachers, not teachers, but the parents to agree to bring at least one-third of the students, so that you would only have to do two bus trips. I mean, it's logistically...
A nightmare.
Yeah, but it's a nightmare for every, if you do full back to school, the logistical nightmare's on the school.
It's a logistical nightmare for every scenario.
Right, and then hybrid, it's logistical issue for childcare for the three days if your kid isn't going to be in school. And if, and logistical issue at the school.
Well, if we're talking, I believe the number now is about a hundred parents dropping off in the morning, and that's a horror show. And if we're going to up that to two-hundred-plus, I don't even know how you can accommodate.
So then, just to go full hybrid, the logistical nightmare is all on parents. And then education suffers, and we've been told even if we go full remote, we still have to provide in-school services to the students that need, that meet the high needs. So either way, we have to provide all three options.
This isn't even picking the best of the worst, this is picking the worst of the worst.
Well, it's just, at this point in time, I'm not sure where I'm leaning for the elementary.
Steve.
Yes?
Would care, Charlie, against this question, would care take care crossing guards or anything? Because it sounds like it would be a nightmare getting out of traffic. Yeah, I don't know that the chief...
The detail officer, the morning pickup.
Yeah, we have cars backed up now in about a hundred drop-offs.
I think, and I said it at the school committee meeting, I believe we are looking at a detail officer for the...
There's no way you can't.
Definitely.
For the drop-off and pickup.
Definitely for drop-off and pickup, which, and I'm assuming that it would be an eight-dollar shift at that point in time, because...
By the time you get everybody in there, you're getting them out.
Yeah, and the fact that, well, then I guess now we have a resource officer at the school at this point in time, because they need to be there to direct traffic in and out. And I see that with, if we go hybrid, we're still going to have the parents that want to drop off the kids.
Yeah, because they're not going to want them on the bus.
Right, but we still would have a busing issue, even at hybrid, at fifty percent, because you don't have transportation.
There is no good scenario.
And full remote is, because of the experience that everyone went through from March on, the schools did not perform to what is needed to teach remotely. And then there's contractual issues with the SLA president last night posted that the hybrid schedule that we proposed is not being, and we did go into executive session, so I can't tell you what Silver Lake thinks about the contractual issues, but I can just say that he posted publicly.
Union T-shirts, I mean, are the T-shirts in general trained to remote? Are they accustomed to it?
Well, so, so they're supposed to be, the commissioner gave ten days out of a hundred-and-eighty to be used towards professional development. We would only be able to use nine of those days because of the way the schedule is put together right now. So like every, everything's an issue, and I think everyone's, I mean, I've been on the task force, I've been on the mediation meetings, I've been answering emails, phone calls, everything I can for parents and for teachers. I don't know what is the right thing. I think we'll be, after tonight's meeting, we'll see how the elementary school votes, but I can't tell you what's the right thing. I mean, fifty, almost fifty percent of the people would send their kids back at a three-foot distance. So I think you need to take that into account, but you also need to take into account the logistics of actually transporting.
Is that still three-foot distance while they're facing forwards?
Yes.
I don't even see how that works in an elementary school.
It's too bad we can't release buildings to have more room for the kids, you know, so...
Well, so then we also have the logistics of staffing.
Yeah, right, you'd be more rooms, more staff.
Because if the max at six feet is fifteen students, if you're going to put twenty kids in the classroom, you might as well have school back open full-time. Because the average, there's one, there's one class that has, I think, a hundred and two, so you're looking at twenty-five, two, and twenty-six of the other. So if you, if you added a teacher because of, I would make the argument, you could add a staff to try to make the social distancing work, to at least this board, I would make that argument, but I don't know if we have a classroom available if you did that.
And if you could find the teachers.
You'd almost have to have a monitor in the class along with the teacher to make sure the kids can do this and stuff, but how she's going to teach at the same time supervised?
Well, we are talking about bus monitors as well, and the first glance to us from the bus companies, $27,000 per bus. And that wasn't even any of the numbers that I talked to Charlie about previously this week.
How many buses are we talking?
We have ten at the elementary school.
How many for the seventy-seven?
You can put, on the seventy-seven bus, I think you can put twenty-nine, twenty-nine sixty-six.
How many of those buses are available?
So I know we have four of them right now that are the seventy-seven, and I think the six others are seventy-ones.
How do we even pay for this? Which is another issue. I'm not, that is to you, I'm just saying in general. I mean, the whole cost of this thing, we didn't break it down for Halifax's share, but we got to be talking in the four, five-hundred thousand range in January.
Well, for the buses, if you're going with the night, I mean, for everything. Yeah, no, but I know, just take the buses as a piece of it. If it's four-hundred-and-eighty for the three elementary schools for ninety days, that's, we'll assume it goes the whole bore, so it's nine-sixty, thirty percent, let's say roughly, is Halifax, that works out to two-hundred-and-eighty-eight for the buses.
Right, just the buses.
Yeah.
Just for busing for the elementary, and if you include an increased cost at Silver Lake, which there could be, I mean, you could double, you're right, five-hundred-thousand dollars for additional busing if we...
And that didn't include the monitors?
I don't believe that includes the monitors. It's just an extra five-thousand dollars per day.
Seventy thousand for Halifax for ten buses, so call it, yeah, double that, I mean, we're talking upwards of a million bucks.
So I don't...
So going back, is it one way or the other? I don't know how we even pay for it.
So I mean, there's logistical issues, there's financial issues, there's health and safety issues, the other thing that's brought up is, COVID is one health issue, then there's the mental and emotional health of the kids.
Social skill.
So...
And then if the schools were open, then I start to get complaints on what's going on with the schools, as the primary enforcement issues are going to be stepping out into schools and ensuring that proper methods are taken. So I have to look at that stuff and things because...
Just, I'm sorry.
I'm just thinking to myself, I'd be good, I'd say, I'm used to going in and doing a restaurant this fashion, I've never really had to go in and stay in a school, unless something's going on.
That's why I was asking about three-feet separation as long as they're facing forward. I mean, I don't even see that as being enforceable, I mean, there'll be a thousand infractions the first day.
And if you're available to join the call tonight at seven or seven, the joint meeting's at seven, then Halifax separates out at seven-thirty. If you wanted to, because I'm chairing the elementary school, I'll ask if you're on and if you want to say something.
I can, I can.
Okay.
I'll call you directly.
Okay, yep.
Is that a difference in the call?
So there's two separate ones, there's the joint meeting from seven to seven-thirty, and they separated out Kingston and Halifax, and Plinton and Silver Lake, but the only ones I think will be active is, so I bet you that we'll have Ryan on one and Jill on the other to answer any more concerns.
Yeah, there was an article in Express today, I haven't picked it up, about the hybrid, going on hybrid, and the difficulties you're going to have with it.
And then there's, there's the first level order questions, and then there's, I'm up to fifth level, if, what ifs, if these things happen, and that's not even a response to COVID, that's just the financial and logistical issues.
When you choose a plan, is that for a specific commentary or for the hot idea or...
It's the open. And what we were told last night, because I asked that question just to double check, the superintendent said they have to be able to switch within a day. I'm not, I'm not saying that's logistically going to happen, but the plan has to be to switch within a day.
Like being in the military.
But even if we were to close, we'd be obligated for all the hires, right?
Yeah.
And the buses and...
And then another question probably for Bob is just to go through the cafeteria plan with the school when you have a chance.
Sure, I did do a form every walk with Matt, but then once it's in place, because not a lot has come up on any of the DPH calls, but that did come up, colleges, colleges and boarding schools, most of them the elementary schools, but it would have applied, there were concerns about, you know, death here.
Yeah, and the reason why I'm bringing it up is right now, what's been happening is the Silver Lake staff has actually been providing the lunches. When the school committee was doing the, basically the handout of the lunches, Silver Lake was, at the middle school, was preparing all the food, and we were handing it out. And then now, the Silver Lake staff has actually been the ones handing it out, not the Halifax elementary school cafeteria staff. We're different at Halifax, where we have our own staff for the cafeteria, where it's integrated at Plinton and Silver Lake, and the director oversees the Kingston CAF, but I think they have a different contract. It's like there's so many different blocks of understanding to see who reports to who and so...
I know, my granddaughter's going back to Pluma State, and they have to have to test it at least three times through the year. You've got buildings to isolate them, this is college.
Oh, so they are talking about having to have an isolation room at the elementary school for the nurse. So I mean, I still have a lot of questions, even over the hybrid, at the elementary school, and just straight logistics, so...
Would like to do the military field expedience, use what you got, if you can.
And then, again, we have contractual things, because every union can impact borrowing over the plan. So I'm sure that my sixty-hour weeks, the last few, on just responding to all this stuff is probably going to continue.
Of all the scenarios, when are we talking about potentially opening schools?
September sixteenth. That's the date that was voted on by the Silver Lake and the Kingston Elementary School.
So anything can happen between now and then in terms of surge or whatever.
And is that a full return or is it grad?
It's hybrid right now for...
By full return, all grades?
Yeah.
And you're going to say, okay, let's do two grades this week, two grades next week?
Right, right now it's half the, it would be a full hybrid return, not a full.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I don't even see how we monitor the kindergarten kids with masks and social distancing.
So the kindergarten and first grade don't have to wear masks?
Because they're not going to wear them anyway.
So you have to, you have to wear masks on the bus. If the kindergarten or first grade take the bus, they have to wear them on the bus. That's a rule from Desi. That's a mandate by Desi on the bus. Then there's, so, you know, I asked a question about doing half-days for kindergarten, but again, that would entail another bus run.
Also childcare.
Yes.
And so that means there won't be any after-school programs?
Well, so we still need to talk to the YMCA about their morning program and their afternoon program.
We got a morning program too.
So we still have those programs, and then I, at Silver Lake, I asked about sports, because I wanted to bring it up in public. If you can't transport the kids to school, except for being one seat, if we thought about busing for sports, you'd have to double or triple the buses there as well, because we don't, we don't allow the students to drive to the opposing team's fields, because there's a liability there.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So I, I pretty much think sports are done for at least the fall and probably all of next year. And if we, we didn't, we didn't talk about that at Silver Lake, but I have, I think there's budget implications to sports as well.
And if they want the kids to be active, they can do intramural things, you know, after school, as long as we don't have mosquitoes.
Can you guarantee that?
But, you know, just to keep them active, because obviously, you know, the two things, mental wellbeing, you know, put into it, kids want to play the sports, but, yeah, they may just have to do a pickup softball game or a pickup baseball game and not be grabbing a foul.
You mean unorganized sports?
Oh, my goodness.
The devil you said.
That's what I grew up on.
I know, I know.
Stickball, I don't care.
I mean, problem is the enforcement on that, again, of whether or not...
Social distancing, wearing a mask.
And typically, they'd have to use school facilities, town facilities, yeah. I mean, even pickup games, I mean, you know, they'd still be under the restriction.
Well, thanks for...
Well, I love giving board updates on the schools.
Thanks for all the work you're doing.
Thank you, Charlie.
Get your rest and bring yourself out.
Thanks.
Well, I'd much rather get an update than be there doing it, because it was forty years ago, but I went through Proposition Two and a Half, and not life-threatening by any stretch of the imagination, but it was pretty contentious with trying to eliminate banned and...
Track program.
Track, everything, all the sports, busing, you know, within two miles, I can appreciate some of what's going on. Maybe it was fifty years ago. As a matter of fact, I think it was.
Jason, before we leave, the location in Pembroke that they're doing the testing?
I can check because...
I believe there was one at the Halifax Express in Pembroke.
But it's, yeah, I mean, the government, the state government has a website and a map showing where testing is being done, I can pull that down for you after the meeting.
Phyllis, I have a conference express in Kingston as well. Yeah, this was right over the line?
The one in Kingston would be, would be at X at ten.
Okay, I was so big wide in Pembroke. So, oh, yeah, I thought it was real wide?
Yeah, I think that's where they're doing it.
They're doing this, I know they do.
Of course, by the time you get tested and found positive, you've already...
I know, I know. Charlie, did Matt take the...
Yeah, yeah, it's on here.
Oh, I don't know if I can talk.
Yes, I do, that's why I just, um, just on a couple of things, for Scott and his crew group, he's trying to figure out, given that we're having more in-person meetings, the challenges of, at least particularly fogging this building in the evenings, and he's trying to get advice from the board about whether to, I think, right now, for instance, on a Tuesday, he may have them do a regular shift, come back and do the other buildings besides Town Hall, then come back a third time to do Town Hall once the meeting is done. An alternative to that would be they do a regular shift, wait for everybody to be out of here, including meetings, or start the other buildings, and then progress to Town Hall afterwards. There would be overtime one way or the other, either overtime, well, this is where it gets a little weird, the union contract, we don't have this yet, but let's argue for the moment that working more than eight hours in the day gets you overtime, so we got overtime that way, or overtime, you know, with them working the six to two-thirty and coming back. I, what he's looking, the problem is, we're having in-person meetings, either we would Either we would have to have them, no matter what day we do them, unless all of them are on the same day. We're basically, you know, and it really needs to be Tuesday or Wednesday they're doing the fogging, giving, given the building schedules and such.
So they couldn't do it on Friday when the building is basically empty?
Well, the idea is that during the weekend, the whole, the fogging is to kill the virus. If the building isn't being used for two days, then the virus is gone by Monday. So there's no reason to fog it Friday.
So Tuesday is the optimum day?
Yeah, because you have two days on, another two days after. Friday is, you know, somewhat used in this building.
So typically on a Tuesday, the boards that would be meeting in the building would be us.
And or ConCon.
And or ConCon. If we just rescheduled for the interim, maybe Wednesday nights, we might bump into.
Board of Health.
But this.
I have issues with Wednesdays.
Oh, we could use the tent across the street for.
And deal with the mosquitoes.
One, one thought.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
How long does it take the fogging on the building to physically do and how long does it take for it to be safe to come in?
I don't know, I can find out.
Because I was thinking, I know they're starting at six on Wednesdays. If the time was available for the chemical and their time to be dispelled, could they start at five on Wednesday morning?
Yeah, I can ask.
That way they wouldn't have to come back on Tuesday nights.
Yeah, as long as the fogging is, less, disappear, it's toxic, but less irritating, whatever.
That, that was the only way I could see keeping to, because Wednesdays is out for me. And then I had, I've got, well, at least right now, it's the first Monday every six weeks. But I bet you that changes upcoming from the school committee on the elementary. And then Thursday nights, I'm up against Silver Lake. But we've been having meetings every Wednesday, so.
Well, and I could say, on a practical basis, the best effective day to do the fogging is Tuesday night or very early Wednesday morning, given the, this, the building use here at Town Hall.
I mean.
Talk to Scott and see if Wednesday morning is viable, because there's a conflict every night. I was just thinking, if we change to Monday nights, we've got potentially zoning board hearings, we've got finance committee. Thursday night, we've got planning board meetings. So it.
Okay, let me, let me ask Scott, that's a good idea.
Is, uh, I'm not against paying the overtime, I mean, early to spray out Wednesdays if that's.
Or coming in late after the meetings.
Yeah, I, I'm not opposed to that.
I mean, we can, I mean, I think in my mind, we didn't, but, you know, I'll talk about money in a minute, but this is specifically something we did not budget for in our budget and could be payable from the COVID CARES money, even the overtime.
Could we start our meeting earlier on a Tuesday night rather than 7:30?
It's up to three U.
That would make it easier on them. I mean, our meetings typically go, what, two hours sometimes?
Hour and a half.
Yeah, lately.
We've been running about an hour and a half.
Yeah, lately.
Yeah.
And if we.
I mean, you know, as you're doing, you're doing the ACO folks starting at 6:30, for instance, on Tuesday.
Yeah. And, and while we're doing these COVID meetings, we've been handling some items so that we can lighten up the general a little bit. That's an option.
I, I don't have any problem coming in early. Neither do I have objections to paying the overtime if we can work it out. Because the building, that should be a priority, making sure the building's usable.
ConCom's typically not very long meetings.
Right. And I could ask them if they could start, and they start at seven right now. I could see if they can bump it up a little bit earlier.
Yeah, maybe 6:30 and they're out of here by 7:30 and.
If that, I mean, sometimes they're just, you know, even they might be out in a half hour depending.
Yeah, right, exactly. So that might help a little bit, they're not coming in that way.
I mean, I definitely could do 6:30 for us.
I mean, I'm typically here at 6:30 anyway, so it doesn't, not much of a stretch for me, but.
Okay, so let me, let me check in with Scott. You've got, you've given some options, so let's.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the second thing on COVID, the clock keeps running and we need to make, start making decisions about the CARES Act money that's available from us from Plymouth County. There are right now some other sources of money. The Massachusetts IT infrastructure bond bill was passed by the legislature last week. It, I believe, is still with the governor. Representative LaNatra and Senator Brady were able to get 185,000 for Halifax for the systems I'm mentioning here. So that, you know, we can, I don't have any real numbers for that, but that money can be used, you know, put it this way. We don't have to use CARES Act money for those three things unless it goes over the 185, so.
But this is indefinite, and it's just in the bill, right?
Well, it's in the bill, but approved by the legislature.
It is approved.
Yeah, it just needs to go to the governor for signature.
Okay, unless the governor vetoes it for some.
Yeah, which I don't.
Yeah.
The, the votes were, I think, 39 to 0 in the Senate and something like 151 to 2 or 1 in the House.
Yeah, not politically a good move to.
Right, well, you can do it, but then it just gets overridden.
Yeah, yeah, no, I.
What's the point? Susan Lawless just mentioned that we got, that Old Colony Elder Services is giving out a $3,000 grant. I think it's 3,000 each COA for activities, everything like the tent and everything else. The fire chief, you, it's, do I have the right amount for that?
It's 11,000.
Okay.
You spent, well, hundreds of dollars.
Ah, okay. So that, you know, that would bump it up to, let's say, 884,000 dollars that's available to us. We've done three submissions so far to Plymouth County representing about $40,000. There are a number of things that, items that people have asked for which, or were already in the process of purchasing, which we have reasonable estimates on. There are a bunch of unknowns. I don't see any of these items being huge in the sense of hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I'm, what I'm thinking about is if the board would approve in general this, to, then I, then, you know, I will go back to those departments, say, you need to specify what you want. I mean, I had a couple of people talk about signage. Okay, well, lay it out for me. And, you know, and I can think of stuff. I mean, I need to put up permanent signs up at the playground or semi-permanent, COVID-permanent signs up at the playgrounds, for instance. But, and start getting that stuff ordered and moved along. If, what I would do is maybe get preliminary approval from you for all these things, get real numbers for the unknowns, come back to you and say, here are the real numbers, any objections, but keep this moving along. Because the CARES Act money at the very least has to be spent by the end of December. We can only spend it if we, how do I put this, really can get reimbursement if we've spent it by December 31st. So.
So we need to.
Right, now.
Get our act together.
Obviously, depending on what happens with the school system, both Silver Lake and Halifax Elementary, Silver Lake got money, I believe, for IT, right?
120, yeah.
Now, did the P, did each of the schools get PPE money?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, so whether it's big, you know, things like the faucets and such, okay, they're on the list, done. But the bigger numbers, whether it's the school buses or anything, I think, you know, I think we'll have money available if push comes to shove and we have to throw some money into the kitty for the school system for large additional expenses, whether it's personnel or buses or something like that. I don't know that we can cover everything.
Charlie, one thing, like, we've been working with Sandy and stuff, and we've been focusing on CARES, but this still doesn't, the FEMA money.
Yes.
Is totally separate.
Yes.
And there's no limit necessarily, I mean, really, I did the details on that, but we haven't.
Right.
Contributed any expenses to a FEMA reimbursement, potentially, I don't wanna say unlimited amount of money, but it's pushing. They're not putting them on.
Right, but do it, but.
The specific expenses are much more specific.
Right, that's where I'm talking about.
The details are, you know, it's a, it's a bear.
I don't, I don't think, for instance, that the stuff that the state's willing to pay for, or the IT bond bill, FEMA would be willing to pay for.
So my, my thought was like, when we start talking about even police details, I think that could possibly fit under the FEMA money and not even have to come out of CARES.
Well, is there, we have a decent list from Plymouth County as to what's covered, what's not. There are things I need to ask them about. Do we have anything from FEMA really that?
So Sandy and Ken did a couple of webinars on them and, and, you know, at the beginning, I think we thought that the CARES number was so staggering, like, oh, I don't need that FEMA money, but now as I start going, whoa, it's like, wow, we may actually need to look into that.
I mean, one thing would be, I know it sounds absurd, the school buses.
Yeah. So I'll talk to Sandy and Ken and see if, you know.
You know, did they, did FEMA ever come up with at least a preliminary yes, no list of things, yeah?
No, because I know they have personal costs and things like that, I really do think police would be an eligible person.
Chief, can, if you're gonna ask that, can you ask whether or not we can add staff at the school?
Yeah.
Whether it's teachers or parents?
I'm not really sure of the cutoff, you know, FEMA.
Okay. They may have gotten that information during the webinars.
Possibly, yeah, and a lot stopped changing, so I don't, they, we kind of put all the, we put that FEMA recovery, you know, like, on like the background because there's so much, so many other parts of.
Right.
Deal with, but we should really stop looking at that.
Okay. Does this game plan sound reasonable to you?
The, the laptops for the seniors?
Yeah.
I, I would look more at like an iPad instead of a laptop.
Something simple.
Yeah, it's, it's easier.
And as a senior, I think that's right.
How about a person to instruct?
Well, I think the council agent thinks they're gonna do that.
Okay.
Can I just ask the board if busing for both schools would be considered at this point in time? I'm not asking for an amount, just would the board think it's acceptable? If we can come up with a plan.
Tactile, tactile faucets?
No, 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 bu- busing, transportation.
Transportation, I thought you said faucets for some reason.
Well, we gotta do what we gotta do, but can we ultimately afford it?
Well, we're, we're doing it because of COVID. And that's the reason it's being done, otherwise we wouldn't have to do it, we'd go generally, but I could see, I can't see what I could, should be covered.
Okay, well, I just wanna ask if the, if the board's okay with it. I'm not saying that I know the amount and I know how much money, but I, I still think even if we do the hybrid and then, you know, we find out the virus goes away, it's not as, not as potent and we have to shift back to full, but they don't change the regulations on the capacity halfway through the year. I mean, and everyone feels comfortable opening up in masks, then. I, I just wanna have some, just some sort of idea from, from you guys if it's a possibility.
I don't have any problems.
I don't know that we have any other real options, if we have to.
Proactive.
Yeah, at least on board with it.
Okay, and then if we don't do the busing, would the board be okay if we had to add staff to, for their remote instruction? Well, I, I'm not, I'm not sold on the monitors yet and I don't think the school, I know Silver Lake didn't talk about it, the bus monitors. But say.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna be taking temperatures or anything, so I don't know that, well, I mean, the monitor could make sure that people are wearing their ma, that kids are wearing their masks and facing forward or whatever.
You know, the sad part about that is that if you get one kid that starts acting out or because of fear or whatever, then it takes the monitor and everybody else concentrating on that, forget about the rest.
Yeah. Again, there is no good scenario here, just try to get one that at least kind of works.
So you find out the figures and everything, break them out.
Okay, I just wanted to ask if the board was, because e- even if we have to add teaching staff because of the way the numbers work out in the building, I just wanted to see if you guys were okay with that.
We're gonna have to do what we have to do.
With what we got.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring that info back tonight.
Chief?
I didn't see that on the chart, but the paving slash stump grinding operation.
Um, that's the expand drop-off pickup.
Oh, sorry. I probably think that that's gonna be, if anyone remembers, if that's something that's gonna be done. Has to get, has to get moved because there's a lot of work done there.
Well, I need to find, this is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send a list of questions to Plymouth County later today to say, is this an eligible expense now? They have been very fast with reimbursements. We submitted our original reimbursement a month and a half ago and we've not got it. Now, they asked for a couple of things, but they're not being very rapid, let's put it that way.
Who would be the point person to do the, like, because someone, even now, could start getting estimates on that, like, would that be Steve or?
Yeah, because there isn't much time to get that, especially paving.
Well, I don't, I don't, right, I mean, Steve probably is the best person, he has the most contacts.
Are you talking about contracting or are you talking about?
Well, the whole thing, I don't like interfere where it's not my place, but I think someone, like, someone needs to share that.
Do you, do you wanna talk to Matt? Do you?
Matt Derrick?
Yeah, and find out where he is on it?
I did talk to Matt today, I think Matt's like, Matt is.
Overwhelmed?
No, I think it's Steve you need to get to.
Completely overwhelmed with all the stuff he has to handle.
Then, then I would, if you're okay with talking to Steve, I would, I would ask you to.
So then I'll just say, it's all right, but I'll talk to Steve, work with Ken, Brian, come up with a plan, try to get the estimates that I think that's gonna be, you know.
Yeah, see, yeah, absolutely.
Charlie already posed a question to Plymouth County.
No, I haven't yet.
Oh, you haven't?
No, I have to, I'm gonna do that after this meeting.
Okay, but just for a time check.
Yeah, so move it, so, so get an estimate, yes.
Yeah, talk to Steve to see what he thinks he can accomplish and then figure out what you need to get outside of with.
Stop grinding in the pavement also over there?
Yeah.
Or, or pulling the stumps. Well, yeah, I was gonna say.
Might be easier.
Well, beyond that, the grinding is still gonna leave stumps that are gonna, part of the stump that's gonna rot.
And, yeah, but.
Yeah, right.
Kind of like a cheaper for them now, we have, uh, the estimate.
Yeah, I might need a little fill to compact it, but.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Okay.
And then non-COVID, the request to use the green by the church or church?
I, I will see a problem as long as they have some safety precautions in place.
Move it.
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi. Okay.
That's it?
I'm good.
Anything else from anybody?
Is, um.
You know what, I didn't post, I don't think I posted for Monday. And so I have to post, because it's Monday, not Tuesday, I have to post by 1:30 today, which has obviously gone by.
Well, you know, I.
Well, we'll see.
We're gonna meet Tuesday.
Tuesday night anyway, right. If I need to bring anything to you, I'll bring it to you.
Charlie?
Yeah.
These, these interviews that the fans.
Yes.
That's the Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay.
Is everyone Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay.
We're good?
So 6:30 Tuesday night?
We will be looking at the ACO position, right, Tuesday?
Tuesday is the interviews, yeah, 6:30. Four of them, 6:30, 6:45, 7:00, 7:15, then you go into your regular part of the meeting.
Are we gonna score? Like, are we gonna, I, I don't know.
Yeah. Yes.
I like this person! Score!
Yeah, yeah, we, we should, I think we've used a, a format before.
Let me look.
Dig that up and we can kind of.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we, you know, like a one to five score.
We haven't come in. We haven't come in. Seven, four.
Four of them, 6:30, 6:45, 7:00, 7:15.
And chief, you're going to be there too? Are you going to give a?
I'll be in a second.
Are we going to either make the decision that night or are we going to postpone it?
Don't bring that riotous dog of yours.
The law?
Leave the dog at home.
We can decide.
We can, we can decide Tuesday night, Monday morning, yeah.
No, it's up to you. You figure it out.
Chief will be making a recommendation based off the interviews too.
Yeah, yeah, we would, we would hope for a recommendation. That'll make it easier. Okay, I'm still trying to adjourn this.
Okay, move to adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor? All right.
Right.
Thank you, everybody.